I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Lincoln County Commission. It is Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, and welcome to all of those also that are not here in person but are live streaming the meeting. We appreciate you and your interest. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, is there any public input on the agenda? If not, can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Next item, as far as board action to approve the consent agenda, any public input? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, thank you. Our first item, will you read that, Madam Auditor or Clerk? Either one.
I'll take it. The first two items we're here about is a tax deed parcel that we have. It's in the city of Lennox, and we've got a couple options. We did get some bids to do a demolition of it. You see those, they're attached as confidential bids. We really don't have a reason to demolition it because it has not been a nuisance. So if we do the demo, we will not be able to recoup the money in a tax deed sale. So I guess for the first item, I'm asking, well, it's up to you, but do you want to move forward with the demolition or just do it for tax deed?
I noticed you said board discussion. Are you also looking for board action today?
For the demolition, I am not. If you want to move forward with the demolition, then that would be your option.
Thank you. The clarification. Is there any discussion for the auditor by the commission?
John, do you want to make any comments about the structure for the public?
John Romble, Building Superintendent. So the structure seems to be structurally okay as far as the framework, but inside it's very wet and very full of mold. The basement currently has water in it. I didn't go into the basement. Access down into the basements, the stairwell is too weak to probably climb down. We did move forward and have asbestos checks, and I have not got the results of that, but I don't anticipate anything crazy showing up on that.
Well, if the city has them declared it a nuisance, there's not, and we can't recoup it, there's really no point in demoing it.
Mr. Chair, I had the opportunity to take a quick look at this. This is a property, although the neighbors have been mowing it, by no means is this not a nuisance to the community. They just haven't seen what's inside this property. I would be concerned that if someone purchased this property, did not take care of it, it would become an eyesore. The right thing to do is to demo it, and then if we choose to sell the vacant lot, so be it. But this is a nuisance to the community. They just have not deemed it, and the right thing to do is to demo it so it makes sure that it does not become a nuisance for the community.
I too went past it, and from the outside, it is, does look structurally okay, but after seeing the video, it's less than be desired. So I understand why demolition is an option.
Has the video that was taken of the interiors ever been given to the city of Lennox?
No, I have not shared that with them.
I mean, perhaps they would declare it a nuisance at that point, but I'm not going to support demoing it at this point.
Jerry, have we had any other interest from anybody, anybody that would choose to purchase this and rehab it or anything?
I did have a couple calls regarding it because it was on the agenda earlier. They wanted to know when it was going to be sold. I told them that we were looking at other options, and they said that they were in a construction business and had no worries about it because it looks sound.
It's enough mold in there. I would not even want to have people walking through there to inspect it by any means prior to a sale, so.
Well, Mike, I don't have any, I don't, I look at this a couple of ways. One, if you did have some interest on the part of people that would want to try and rehab this thing, you'd have to put it up for an auction, right? You put it up for auction, okay? So we could look at putting it up for an auction, see what kind of money you get out of it, and if it isn't sufficient, and it doesn't warrant anything, you can always tear the darn thing down.
That won't work.
Yeah?
No.
That won't work either?
No, when you do a public auction, it's sold as, sold as is. You don't get to...
We don't have a...
I would hate for anybody to go in and look at it.
Anyway, yeah, it's, it's not any skin for myself, but I do believe the, again, if it was solely my consideration...
Mike, what's a lot sell for in Lennox, anyway?
It's small like that, it's very not advantageous for size.
What a size lot is that? Is that 50-foot frontage?
At most.
Because that's kind of a...
I would say at most. It's literally, I would say, two, maybe three feet on each side of the house is the, as far as the side lots lines are.
I think it's 50 foot.
So I'd say maybe 50 feet, yeah, maybe.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let's see if we can try and sell it, recover some money for the county, and if we can't, then maybe we need to reassess and tear it down. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Poppins, and the one thing people can't see right now is these quotes for excavation. There's a really good quote in here that's probably only going to last for this year, and it is a really good deal to demolish a house. I'm worried for taxpayers that we lose that quote, and then next year it's double. So here's my course of act, suggested course of action. Let's see if we can sell it. I mean, really, if anybody's going to buy this thing, it's not for the house. I mean, you'd have to be crazy to live in that house, but they're probably buying it for the lot. So let's try and sell it, give it a couple weeks. If we can't do it, then maybe we reassess and get the thing knocked down.
So with the tax deed, we would have to have it for 30 days?
Okay.
And I think the quote that was in there, did that expire in 30 days or was it 60 days?
Well, maybe John can go back to them and work his magic with them, right?
It's, it's definitely a house you aren't going to flip, that's for sure.
My concern isn't that they aren't willing to pay something for it. My concern is that it would sit there and not have anything done to it, and that is not right to the neighbors in the, in the area, so.
Joel, I'm trying to figure out, if you're going to sell it, how are you going to market that thing? Because you can't put it on auction, we were told.
No.
No, you can put it on auction.
She didn't say you can't do that.
You can.
I just would not encourage us letting anybody into it to view it.
Well, and when we did the house in Canton, we didn't let anybody in that one either. We just did it open, we did sealed bids on it, and they sold it, they rehabbed it, and they're renting it.
So let's go with me, Jerry. I would just ask, we should put this on and auction it off, but we can auction it off because we have to evidently sell it, but we can put it on the market to sell...
You want to pay a realtor to sell it?
No, no, I'm just asking Commissioner, he once had an idea to put this on the market to sell it, to see if that would regroup any money, and if it didn't, then tear it down. So selling and auction are in two different categories, right?
Well...
It's item two on our agenda, so can we talk about item one on the agenda? Is somebody going to make a motion to demolish this property?
I am not.
I'll make a motion to demolish it for the purposes of making it safe for the neighborhood.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Hearing none, I guess the motion fails. Any other discussion?
So what course of action are we going to take?
We don't need to do anything. We discussed it. We're not taking action on it. We can go to the next agenda item.
So then item two would be to declare it surplus, appoint appraisal committee, which we have done, and authorize the auditor to advertise the online auction to be sold on September 22nd.
And for an appraisal committee...
That's already been done.
Yep, it's already been done.
The appraisal committee is done?
Yep.
Okay. Then I would move to declare the property as surplus and to authorize the auditor to advertise for an online auction of the property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Landine, a second, by, by Ehrens. Any further discussion by this commission? I guess at this time, then, I'll allow for public input. Any public input on this matter? If not, I guess call a roll. Alicia.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
No.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
No. Motion carried.
All right. My next item is board action to approve a polling location change for precinct 27 and 29, the city of Harrisburg, moving it from the Harrisburg Methodist Church to the Liberty Elementary.
The Harrisburg, where again?
We're moving it from the Harrisburg United Methodist Church to the old Liberty Elementary School slash Heritage, the Heritage. It will be in the Commons area.
Is the church asking us to move?
It's really crowded to get Ward 1 and Ward 2 in the church. The school has more room for them to move around.
You're not concerned about confusion from the primary to the general election?
No, because we are going to work with the city of Harrisburg to get it out on the water bills because it is for the residents of the city of Harrisburg. We're also going to put it on our website and send out notices to each registered voter. That'll be about $1,500 cost.
And then on the day of the election...
We'll have a sign on the church.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm going to try my best to get everybody notified.
We got to catch those stragglers.
Absolutely.
These just a few, sorry, are these just a few blocks from each other then, or?
Yeah.
Any other discussion for the auditor on this matter by the commission? I guess before I entertain a motion, I'll ask for public input on the matter. Again, state your name and address in approximately three minutes.
Okay, I just, I know that the VFW and their community center is an excellent place that has a lot of space. I've done meetings in there. It would be an ideal space for a voting place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Okay, if not, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
A motion by Schmidt, seconded by Landine. Any discussion? Okay, Alicia, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. Next, Mr. Meter?
Good morning.
Yes.
Joe Meter, Deputy State's Attorney. Every five years, the SDDOT and the FAA requires this board to recertify our airport consultant. So I'm asking for board action today. There's three things that are required of this commission when we do this, and one of those things is creating an airport committee to actually review these applications that we will eventually seek. So the SDDOT requires a minimum three-member board to create this committee. So I'm asking board action today to nominate members to this committee, and then eventually the actual attachments to this requested action are the requests for qualifications that we will eventually put out. And then there's a list of six consultants that I've attached here that are just proposals for that committee to eventually consider. We need to request three to, or we will write to three eventually. Those are all attachments for further action from that committee, but eventually that's done, but today I'm asking for the committee to be formed.
What constitutes that committee, Joe?
It just needs to be three members that are interested in the airport.
So, well, I would nominate one that, Commissioner Poppins, you've served on that. I would nominate you to be part of that three.
My recommendation is you have two county liaison, commissioner liaison, and an airport manager. I think that would be at least one option.
Okay, two commissioners you want?
Well, we have, you have two liaisons for it, and then the manager.
Okay.
So, but that would be one option.
Who's the liaison?
Commissioner Gibbon and myself are liaisons.
Mike, who do you want to take your place then?
This is just for this until the end of the, this is for this purpose.
Okay, so you want your...
I'll stay on.
You'll stay on?
I would be willing to stay on, yes.
Mike, is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any public input on this matter? Is there any further discussion by this commission? If not, the motion was made by Poppins, seconded by Landine, so call the roll, then, please.
I think it was seconded by Schmidt.
Schmidt, excuse me.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Yes, public comment, I'm sorry. Okay, now call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, motion carried. As far as, before we, do we have any executive session, Drew?
We will, if we take public...
Okay, this is an opportunity for public comment. Again, state your name and address in approximately three minutes. Good morning.
Morning. Can I get the Elmo?
I'm not sure...
I got it. Mick Beruth, Lincoln County, 5405 South Coneflower Circle. So I heard discussion early this morning about possibly demolition of a property, and doesn't look like the county wants to spend money to do that. Well, I think I just found you $100,000 a year. So much conversation about these tabulators that we use to count our ballots supposedly being more efficient and cheaper. I decide maybe it was time to look into what the actual cost of those machines are. And Lincoln County has paid ESNS $514,000 since the year 2016. You'll notice that about $80,000 of that was in non-election years. For what? This doesn't even count the money you guys have paid attorneys to keep the proof of the results from we, the people, the cast vote records. $100,000 a year to run our ballots through a machine? When we're talking about what? Was there 4,000 ballots in the, in the primary election? Maybe five? This doesn't count how much more is got to be spent in the year 2024 for the general About 28 years ago, I learned the concept of follow the money trail. It explains almost everything. Looks to us like Lee and ESNS is taking in enough taxpayer money to launder some of it back to somebody, just like our selected officials and unelected but also selected bureaucrats in Washington are lining their pockets with the endless wars in foreign aid. For you guys to defend these machines? Common sense would say we could pay our own constituents a tenth or a fifth of that money to hand count these ballots. The only people who would defend this are somehow getting their pockets lined. They're taking enough money to line somebody's pockets. I would welcome all of you to attend our hand counting next week, Monday and Wednesday. Where's that again in?
In Harrisburg at the VFW.
In Harrisburg at the VFW. So you can get an understanding of how transparent and efficient hand counting actually can be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other? Good morning.
My name is Jean Childs. I live at, do you want my address? 5105 South Roland Green Avenue, apartment 102, and I live in Lincoln County in Sioux Falls. Okay, I'm sure you have nothing to hide. I'm sure everything is on the up and up. I'm sure you want transparency in our elections and that deep down in your hearts, you care about we, the people. I'm sure, I'm sure therefore that there is absolutely no valid reason to destroy the 2020 ballots. Do not destroy the 2020 ballots. Allow we, the people, to examine them to verify that the 2020 election was fair, honest, and secure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Cindy Meyer, Hartford, South Dakota.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Cindy Meyer. Our attorney, Steve Hugard, received a letter just a short time ago. It was a courtesy letter stating that the 2020 ballots were going to be destroyed, and I'm just wondering why the rush on destroying those. The lawsuit that we brought forward was never heard for the evidence that we had. It was always dismissed based on procedural issues. The evidence has never been listened to. The evidence would show that there was fraud in our elections, and so why is it that you're wanting to destroy these ballots or allowing for the 2020 ballots to be destroyed when we know that there could, there is ongoing legal matters in this regard? The 2020 CVRs in Minnehaha County were examined by the auditor there, and they showed that there were unnatural vote returns. Well, if it happens in Minnehaha County, the chances that it's happening in Lincoln County are pretty high. So going along those lines, I would even ask you, the EMS system laptop that your auditor is using is out of compliance with the EAC, and the virus protector hasn't been updated since 2019. And I would also ask, because we can't seem to get this information from the auditor, are you using the correct equipment in the first place? You're supposed to be using a Dell computer with this EMS software, and have you checked that Dell to see if it is even an EAC piece of tested equipment? So I would just ask that you hold off on destroying those ballots because I believe you're getting rid of evidence. And I propose this question in Minnehaha County, that, you know, the Minnehaha County Commission don't really seem to be patriots in this movement either, and I brought along a voter registration form to see if any of you guys want to change your voter registration from a Republican to a Democrat because that's how this seems, is going down. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jessica Paloma, Sioux Falls.
Again, state your name, please. I didn't...
I just did. Jessica Paloma, Sioux Falls. So I'm here to give you guys a couple of updates from the FBI and CISA, and hopefully you can see that there. July 31, the FBI and CISA put out a joint public service announcement that our elections are going to experience cyber attacks. It was a warning. It's not saying if and when, it's saying that will be happening and that we will not be getting election results in a timely manner in the 2024 general election. So they're already telling us that we're going to experience cyber attacks. They're going to put the election cycle at risk, and so I just wanted everyone to know that the FBI has been warning us since at least February that this is going to happen in our elections. So Linda's going to let you know about a hand count event coming up, and we strongly suggest that you all attend and everyone learn how to hand count in an efficient manner because it looks like it's a great possibility that we'll be doing that in the upcoming election. Secondly, I wanted you to know that massive amounts of perjury are being let through into your Lincoln County voter rolls on a monthly basis. Registered voters are claiming the postal annex in a commercial building on Louise where Panera Bread is as their residence, their physical residence, which is perjury. This is from your zoning ordinance that no one is to live in that building unless it's a dwelling above the first floor. Postal annex is on the first floor. This is what these voter registration forms come through looking like. And residence address is a PMB on South Louise, mailing address is a PMB on South Louise, and line 3A, which is now 4A on the current voter registration form, says if your residence is a PO Box general or delivery, you must give the location of your residence. You can see that this person did not give a location of their residence, and they've said that they live in a PMB, which is impossible. They're canceling their voter registration form from Overland Park, Kansas, but provided no proof of living in South Dakota, even for one day. I've purchased about 250 of these from your auditor's office, and they all look exactly the same. We visited the Minnehaha County Sheriff yesterday, and they seem to agree that all of these voters have indeed committed perjury, and if there was such thing as law enforcement, they should probably be arrested and, or at least investigated for committing perjury, and then this process needs to be put to rest. So I just wanted to also, there's a couple lawyers in the group here. This document's out on the CISA and DOJ website, Federal Prosecution of Election Crimes, and the list is extremely long of the federal violations being committed by your county auditor on a regular basis, and I would suggest to her legal counsel that you take this complaint seriously. This is a verbal cease and desist notice. You'll be receiving a formal cease and desist notice because perjury in our voter rolls is not okay. We're being disenfranchised, and our constitutional rights are being violated by this process, and we would request that you stop this immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Johnson, Harrell, Canton. Thank you for your time this morning. I just want to have, take a little different twist on this. I know I knocked, my wife and I and some helpers knocked on well over 2,000 doors in this past primary, and the reason I know is I ran out of materials twice. So I know how many doors we hit. What was very disturbing to me is that in every community in this district, there were addresses that don't exist on my official voter roll that I picked, that I bought from the state back in March. About 9,600, it was Republican list, 9,600 Republicans. In every community I would go to, there'd be an empty lot with somebody's name registered to it as a voter. Now, I know some people say, well, some people will just put an address in there so they don't get all this mailing garbage in the mail, but it just happens over and over and over. I would go to the end of the street, and there'd be two more addresses beyond the end of that street that don't exist. It costs nothing to save these records. If anything we can do to clean up our voter rolls and make sure that everybody is legitimately voting in South Dakota is allowed to vote here, you know, two years ago, I sponsored legislation, or I co-sponsored legislation to get a 30-day residency, trying to overcome this PMB issue and all these other issues. Of course, that's sort of unconstitutional because we still allow by federal law overnight registration. We do people, we allow people to come in, spend one night in, in South Dakota, register to vote and vote. But how many of these people are actually using fake addresses? We all know on the dark web, you can get, you can get anything you want on the dark web, and something like this would be so easy to do. But it's very disturbing because of my, in my own person, just myself walking, I probably ran into 50... into 50 addresses that just do not exist. And Buck, one of the ways we can, we can, we can find those is by keeping records like this, court may, comparing them to the votes, comparing them to the voter rolls, and making sure that they're all accurate. So that's, I really would urge you to save these records. It costs nothing to save them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mike Mathis, Lincoln County. I live in Sioux Falls. Currently, I work with Lee Anderson over in Minnehaha in the auditor's office. And she did a reconciliation of the cast vote records back to the, what was submitted to the Secretary of State, and that's where we found the difference. So did we do that in Lincoln County here? Do you know? Probably not. But so that, when we found that out, that was where we had to do 100% hand recount. That's why we did that for the primary. And I got to tell you, it was, it was beautiful. It was so awesome to see Republicans, Democrats, NPAs, liberals, everybody taking a part in the process. The people loved it. You know, ever since we've done that, there hasn't been one person questioned the count. It's, it's been beautiful. So the one thing I will say is, everybody says when we hand count, there's, the people screw up. Not with the way we do it right now. That's why I would encourage you to go to the hand count. It's, it's unbelievable how efficient it is, how thorough it is. So we compared our results to the tabulators, and there were differences. The difference, the difference were because of voter intent. And if you looked at a couple ballots, I know Mick didn't have time to show it, but there were some that a person had an X through, and you could obviously tell which one they meant to vote for. And when you hand counted it, you could tell. But when you put it through the machine, there was no way of telling. So the hand count was more accurate than the tabulators. I am 100% confident in saying that. So, and one thing I will say is, every vote matters. It doesn't matter if you win by 100 votes or whatever it is. Everybody that votes expects their vote to be counted correctly. So without us doing that hand count, then that vote would not have been counted correctly. So with what's coming up in the 24 general, it's just, I don't know what's coming. I don't think any of us know what's coming. So what, what are we waiting for? The people are really wanting transparency more than ever. And considering what's on the ballot this November, it's just unbelievable what it could do to our state, some of the measures on there. So it's really time to get serious about this. And if we don't, the repercussions, if something, you know, if, if the vote is inaccurate for the general, your guess is as good as mine.
Thank you.
Good morning. Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. All of us want free, fair, and transparent selections. With all the, the number of things we've got on the ballot this fall, I think there are going to be dire consequences if we don't get our ballots counted correctly. I, I think, you know, the, the state law says that the ballots will be counted at the precinct. That law has not changed. The machines were brought on board, and there were rules made to use the machines. But the law still says that the ballots will be counted at the precinct, and that's where they should be counted. The people should count the ballots, not the machines. You know, we, we pay Sherry a sizable salary to audit the books of Lincoln County, and I think we ought to audit the election too. You know, we, we just assume that ESNS is going to be truthful with us. And we, we don't, we just accept whatever they say. There is no audit of those elections. And I would encourage this board to maybe, maybe get this item on the agenda so we can sit and talk about it and, and examine how, how the elections have been handled in the past. You know, the biggest, one of the biggest problems I got is this, these PMBs. We're allowing people from California to decide what goes on in South Dakota. And I think that's wrong, as wrong can be. I know that's probably beyond this board's say, but I think we need to start getting the counties on board with getting rid of these PMBs. Why, why would we allow anyone that doesn't live in South Dakota to decide what happens in South Dakota? It's just beyond my comprehension that would even allow something like that. Those PMBs should not be allowed. I know it's all about money. You know, they license their vehicles here. We get millions of dollars. You, you'll go, go to Arizona and see all the South Dakota vehicles down there. And you go and say, where do you live in South Dakota? Oh, I don't live in South Dakota. I just licensed my vehicle there. But that'll, because they license their vehicle here, it allows them to vote here. And they get to decide, they get to decide whether we're going to have abortion here or not. Why would we allow that? They get to decide whether the pipelines cross our property here or not. Why would we allow that? It's time we get this board and other boards on board with us and try to straighten out our elections here. This affects each and every one of us, and I would encourage you guys to help us get, take our elections back and let South Dakota decide what happens in South Dakota. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I need the overhead as well. Is there certain spots? It's supposed to, here we go. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
My name is Penny Baybridge. I'm from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And on June 20th, I observed the training. And I observed, well, I observed the after-election audit that was performed here. We had two tables sitting on either side, five people sitting on each table. And we were not allowed to observe the training. I was sitting outside the room watching through the window. And what I observed was people reading off of some documents and people talking, and you could see they're answering questions. And then they started at about nine o'clock. Well, the thing is, reading the instructions isn't training. Training is a hands-on thing. Let's take golf, for instance. So you get a book on golf, and it says this stick here is called a wood iron. And you hold it this way, and you hit it out, and the ball goes a long distance. You're getting at the ball. And this is a putter, short distance to that. Now you've had your training, now you're going to play in the U.S. Open. You need to practice. Okay? There was no practice here. So what I observed was, this here is a sheet. I got, through the FOIA request, I got documents showing this is what was done between those two tables. This was District Precinct 20 over here. Now, when you look at these, you have a group of five, 5, 10, 15, 20, 25. So half of this is 25. That makes 50. So we have 50, a 25, 50, 125. And then you see there's a one tick there, so it shows a total of 126. And then there's scratch outs. I observed during this event that the people on this side doing Precinct 20 started over five times. The table over here kind of pretty much went through it. When we go down to the next row, we count 5, 10, 15, 16, 17. So there's 17 tally marks here, and it was written in 21, it got written over 18. The tally marks do not match the number that's supposed to be the total. Now, this is one person doing it. The second person's supposed to match them. So the second person, you can see, we're counting 50, 100, 20, 125, 126, 127, 128. And then they scratched out the others. So this one doesn't have the correct numbers either. They wrote 126. And as well, when you're looking down here, they have 17 tally marks, and they marked 18. This is inexcusable to have this kind of thing going on. We have to have proper training. And it has to be hands-on training. I invited training that's coming up. I don't blame the people doing this. This was a new experience for everyone. You know, I understand, I've hand counted actually at an election. There's pressure on that. But this needs to be done over, and it needs to be done correctly. Also, I know when Minnehaha County did their, did their thing, they were averaging probably, I don't know, something like 1,000, you know, ballots in an hour. They, they went through 17,000 in one time period. I was averaging something like 175 ballots per hour. That's really inefficient. You know, it needs to be proper training to get it done right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take one more, and then we'll go ahead.
I'm Lynn in Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I'll also need this. What Rick was referring to, and everyone's referring to, is that the machines do not read the mistakes. They do not read voter intent. Here, on this part, it was for Public Utilities, Gary Hanson. The person crossed that out and then voted for Devin Saxon. Now, this is a sample ballot, so I won't get in trouble there. But when the machine sees this, they throw out the ballot. And that happened when I was part of the post-election audit. And I'm sorry, but we don't need to rely on a machine to count the vote. You talk about, and then I just want to show you quickly what a, a tally sheet looks like with the new system. And what is nice about this system, it's going from left to right. Everything is marked. And when I was working with, with people counting or when I'm training, it's you, if Tony got, happened to have five votes, you say five. Your partner, who is also counting, will agree with that or disagree with that. And then we go back and say what's wrong. So we could do it in five ballots. And you only do 25 at a time with one color pen. Then after 25, you match the two people tallying, and then you change pens. So you never have to go back through the whole thing. Now, you've talked about keeping the 2020 ballots. Now, I believe that we need to do this because we have never audited the machine. The only way to audit the machine is the CVRs, the ballot image, and the cast vote records. We've been asking for three, three and a half years plus. This gives transparency. That is what the machines were for, to have, oh, thank you, to have, excuse me, confidence our election, to give the public confidence. So we're having an event at the Harrisburg American Legion and next Monday and Wednesday from 6:30 to 8:30. We hope the public comes. We're going to be advertising, and I will have these on the, on the table here because I didn't get them to you soon enough to give them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any commissioner reports?
I just have one comment to make. I'm privileged to announce that we have what is known as the National Association of Counties has a board of directors that meets periodically during the year. I've had the privilege of serving on that board for several years. And to join me now, we have added, we, South Dakota gets two members on that board. So a few years ago, it was always two commissioners, and we changed that board to have a county official and a county commissioner represent South Dakota. Well, due to a resignation from that board, from a young lady who was the official from Davidson County in Mitchell, has resigned. And to take her place, we have our auditor, Sherry Lund, will be replacing her. So Sherry and I will be representing South Dakota on the National Association of Counties, our board of directors. And I'd like to congratulate her and welcome her, and I think that she's going to make a valued addition. In case anybody ever wants to know more about that board or anything and what it does, I would welcome you to go to our website, or I'll be happy to talk to you because it is our representative in Washington, it lobbies for counties continually. It's a non-political affiliation. They have, they work on farm bills, they work on all kinds of issues that are pertinent to counties for roads and bridges and countless other things. And if you ever want to know about your county, you can go to the website and just look up South Dakota, and you can find Lincoln County, and it will tell you the number of people that are, have college education, high school education, what the major employment is, how many square miles we have, how many roads we have. There is a plethora of information that if you want to know about it, it's all free, and you can get any county in the state of South Dakota, you can get any county in the nation for that matter. But I would encourage you to do that because it has a lot of good things that maybe you didn't pick up on. So once again, congratulations, Sherry, and we will, I think, talk about that more. Anyway, that's all I have.
Yeah. Congratulations to both of you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, congratulations to Commissioner Schmidt and Auditor Lund. Good job on getting on that committee. I want to thank the folks that came out this morning to talk about election integrity. It's important. So thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing your story. Americans and South Dakotans, and we all need to have the utmost confidence that our elections, that our vote is going to be counted. You know, in South Dakota, we have a lot of races that are usually decided by a very few votes. So having election, you know, most of the time, these legislative races and commission races, it's just, you know, sometimes it's 17 votes, five votes here. So that's a close race. We need to make sure we get every, everyone's vote needs to count because that's important. Story I want to share is, when I was in Iraq, I filled out a absentee ballot application request, and I sent it in. And the mail was obviously not very efficient, and it got delayed. And in 2004, that was, I was there from late '03 to early '05. In 2004 election here in November, that was a hotly contested election here in South Dakota. I don't know if folks remember. That was the John Thune, Tom Daschle race. And I think that race, what was it, decided by less than 1,000 votes? So we have very close races even at the state level here. Well, when I got, I didn't get to vote by absentee ballot because my absentee ballot was late because the, the mail shipments were being attacked, you know, by the terrorists. And so I never got my absentee ballot before the election. Now, it just so happened that my daughter was born in late October, so I got to go home to see my daughter, who is newly born, and then I got to early vote. And that was the only reason I got to vote is because my daughter was born. If I would have waited for the absentee ballot to get to me, it would, it would have never been turned in, in time to be able to be counted. Well, I, my daughter's 19 years old now, by the way. So I get home, vote, see my daughter, great. I get shipped back to Iraq. It's November 6th, 7th, or 8th, I don't remember what it was. And right there laying on my cot was the absentee ballot, delivered after the fact, not in time for me to vote. Well, I have this absentee ballot to this day, got it framed in my office. So I can tell you, folks, it's very important that we pay attention to these voting systems. We understand how they work because it's important for everyone's vote to be counted because people are literally fighting for your right to vote. And so I appreciate the fact that the public's paying attention to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have a report? Okay. With that being said, I guess, are we, do we have executive session? We do. Under which category?
I'll move to go into executive session under STCL 125-2 sub 3.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landin?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. I have a motion by Poppins, second by Schmidt to come out of executive session. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Most of you adjourned?
Second.
I have a motion by Schmidt, second by Landine, to adjourn. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaronson?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. We are adjourned.